So hello everyone, welcome and um So I'm trying a new format today and see how it goes but Let's start in a few minutes time So if you're on to say hello I'll be placing the cards um soon out So you can actually choose one of the cards among the three right now And I will actually I will actually be opening a safe space for everyone with spirit and my team of light So let me place the cards first So it's card number one Card number two and card number three And I'm using the Bach Flower Oracle deck for today So I will be opening up a safe space for everyone joining in and um Let me know you're joining in so I can include you in the safe space as well So I'll be doing this now and um Activating with your team of light and spirit to help you to choose the best card That's for the guidance for this week to work on That's for you And throughout the session whatever messages or guidance you receive That you receive that's the best for your highest good as well So um take this moment to just focus and work on choosing the best card Hello Natalie, hi So I'll give some moments for people who are joining in to pick the best card As I have opened up a space for everyone to join in And if you would like to join in um just let me know so I can include you in So this reading is a general uh guidance and message reading with your team of light and spirit And I don't intend it to be an energy outlook reading um So it's reading that actually works with whatever guidance and message If it's an immediate guidance or message then I intend to let it come through so um You are able to walk through with your spiritual team and spirit to work on it Because sometimes we may have done a reading in the past with someone else But um may not have fully worked on what they have been guiding you to Or may not have gone through this um guidance or message from them From another another tarot oracle reader or you have actually known it yourself So I have intended it to be a reading that's for your highest good whatever that um may come through And taking this week to look through at it So gives you an opportunity to work on it and um The healing work helps to actually help you in move through the guidance and message So you work with your team of light to actively work on any physical changes Physical work that they are guiding you to do So Alright, so I will include you for card number two Natalie So I will start this session right now So this is card number one So card number one is Gan Tian And it says from discouragement to trust, follow your flow So let me take a look at this card So card number one for a group of people um I'm doing it intuitively with my spiritual team and spirit so um It may not be exactly the message that is reflected on the card So what I'm seeing actually is you are, this is actually you But I'm actually drawn and focused on the waves and the waters at the back And to me it actually is a message is coming through is that Um wanting to let you be aware of what you follow What you follow other people's opinions Society's um you know saying of what you have to follow, what you have to Um follow and be with them so you are respected for example So you um have to contribute in a certain way as well, this is one of the other Message that I'm actually hearing and um They are saying that when you follow these um guidance, this message, this vibe, this tribe This flow, this energy You tend to not be really grounded with divine spirit and your team On the guidance and message they're actually guiding you 24/7 and in that regard Because I'm hearing someone asking why, why is that so? You would notice when you follow your friends, right? When you go out on an outing You tend not to be really mindful uh with your spiritual team With spirit 24/7 what they're guiding you So when your friend usually for example um suggests So let's go to this place um this bar or this restaurant to dine You will not really think so much, you will not really um ponder And ask your team of light, ask spirit as well whether if they're guiding this And you will actually just go with the flow um and um If it suits you, if it feel, you feel that it suits you, you say yes or you may say no Depending or you may suggest another restaurant and bar So that is one way um an example and analogy they they are telling me And I'm hearing them uh telepathically telling me That this is what happens in real life and most people may not be really aware of it And this is one uh way that you may follow the energy, the vibe or the tribe that you're in And um more than often they just want you to know to be a very mindful and aware Um of what type of vibration that you are carrying with you Of what type of intentions and mindfulness that you actually have And you're actually working on towards too And um that will help immensely So this is the message and guidance that I'm actually seeing That it will be really great for the group of you to work on Primarily it's because that um They are saying it will help immensely for the healing um journey that you would want to walk in the future And um this is one area that most of us may not be really aware But it makes a big difference when you're trying to work on your healing So you work already on um healing any external influences Like an external um sort of influences that is more from others So you work on that And that is actually Yeah, that's actually the guidance and message that I'm actually receiving from this card So um let me take a look at the healing work So for the healing work um I'm seeing to help The group of you, I'm seeing a lot of urgent need That your spiritual family is saying you need to be grounded with The guidance and message from divine spirit, not just grounded on earth Someone is, I'm picking up a vibe, someone relating to ground groundedness And your spiritual family is saying not just that But also to be grounded with your spiritual family Your spirit uh your divine spirit's guidance, right? And message Because when you are not really present with their guidance and message, it's pretty Not really um mindfully with them 24/7 And you can really be grounded with their their guidance and message That is actually um one of the practice that some people When they go uh to work on their spiritual journey with Tibetan Buddhism Um trying to be really mindful of divine spirit's guidance and message every moment And they try to really work on that, so not just being grounded on earth But also grounded in being spiritually mindful Grounded in divine spirits and your spiritual family's guidance and message as well So the healing will help in this area To help you stay in touch with their with their guidance and message So I hope that makes sense for the group of you So let me take a look at the comments So hello everyone, this is a choose a one card reading session But I have intended that the best and highest good message and guidance comes through from your divine spirit And from your spiritual family So um if you would like a reading and this would be a general reading You can feel free to choose one card from the three cards So I will go into card number two right now And I know Natalie you have chosen card number two So card number two is Wild Rose And let me take a look at this card So Wild Rose, the message and guidance is Urging and reminding you to um embrace with activities of self-love And really, really um embrace in doing them Sometimes I'm picking up from your spiritual family, people have chosen this card is that you are aware Uh someone I'm seeing is nodding her head, you know, yes, I'm aware I'm aware of self-love activities and working on it already And they are saying your spiritual family and all of your spiritual families actually saying that is great But they want you to take a step further to embrace these self-love activities There is still some um work that you're moving through and I know all of you are aware of this And that's why they are guiding me to talk on embracing self-love activities Rather than um guiding you to get in touch or do research Because you already know and you already have been researching and looking into it So they are saying to embrace self-love activities and not to see it as just doting yourself But knowing that um there is a true element here in self-love and taking care of yourself In knowing that um it's more than just self-love, right? Because when you do self-love activities, it's not just um putting aromatherapy always in your bathtub But it's also the way you talk to yourself, self-talk The way you encourage yourself, the way you motivate yourself and truly be there for yourself When perhaps nobody is there, being there for you But you are being there for yourself and you know that that is the way That is the heart-centered way, that's the hard path And that is how you can really nurture and tend and grow to yourself And not just buying flowers, but they are saying uh that is great, that is wonderful And they still encourage you to do that, it that isn't that they aren't encouraging you to do it But they just want you to embrace more self-love activities and really um seeing the value of it Because it's so precious and it's so much you actually receive internally the value of loving yourself And um I would say that when you get in connection with embracing the value like this You know that it's so precious and you really really want to um Put in much effort in taking regular care of yourself and that's what they are sharing Um as a general message and guidance for all of you And I'm actually seeing someone buying flower bouquets for yourself somehow Um they are saying that's that's really great and that's a um great enjoyment Not just a luxury pleasure but Uh there's something really wonderful when a female, a feminine soul, you Appreciates flowers and appreciates seeing flowers in your home as well And adorning um you know it as a decoration in your house So that is for card number two But um let me take a look at the healing work So for the healing work session for this Yes, all of your spiritual family and spirit is actually saying it would be really great To help you this next leg and next step of your journey On embracing self-love and helping you to work through this So you're actually uh gaining a step closer to what other things to do There will be one one point in time, to be honest, that when you do self-love activities You do all the physical self-love activities, you will feel like you reached a plateau You feel like you reach there's something more, there's something more to self-love, but what is there? What is there more though? And that is that next step And they are saying this will guide you and helping, this healing work will help to guide you to this next step And to explore and discover yourself as well So that's for card number two And uh I'll just take on, look at the message So hello Donna, Bruh, I'm not sure whether if you're here Hello Judith And hello Hinetiki Okay, so the both of you have chosen number three or someone had chosen number two If you feel like um you have, you are guided to card number two's message um Or choose card number two or three, uh don't be afraid to make a change of your choice So I'm still opening up the space And um your spiritual family is actually guiding you to choose the best card so um You can do a last minute confirmation which card um you have chosen And you can tell me if you would like to join in for the healing work So I can add you in for the healing work after I've ended the live session And that's uh for each and every card that I'm doing the healing work for So if you feel it's card number two, don't be afraid um to to try to validate with your spiritual family and spirit That's great to hear, it's great to see you here, Hinetiki So I'll go on to card number three, you're welcome Natalie I hope the message for card number two helps you So card number three is Walnut So Walnut, uh let me take a look at this card So for card number three um I'm seeing from for from your spiritual family and from spirit actually You are very aware about um The decisions and choices that you got to make on your journey, on your path And you are already having a path set up for yourself, uh what to walk and etc. And your spiritual family is saying it would be great to work with them On um especially if you have any big choices, big decisions that you've got to make It would be really great if you work with them to ask them for guidance, ask them for message And um make that decision on guidance with them Because I am seeing this is actually you and you, I'm seeing the energy clavoyantly That you have already um made that path for yourself in life Throughout life actually um up to Some somehow near retirement of age And um this is actually spirit and your spiritual family shining the light And trying to get your attention about this Um the reason being is I'm seeing some other elements here So there is a dark shadow around your path And they are just wanting to let you know um it would help immensely for you to Work with them on guidance and message um Not just the big choices, someone is asking me and I'm hearing um hearing it, is it just the big choices? And I am saying not just the big ones, I'm seeing the small ones as well But uh usually the big ones um for us it feels like having more impact And um but I've seen both the big and the small ones And the reason is that um These that I'm actually seeing uh they just want to help you move through these Feels like external elements uh that may sort of affect your judgments On whatever decisions and choices that you're making on your path And whatever that um you would be making in the future Reason is not everything is set in stone in the future and um Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just seeing that that's what they just want me to share with you And not to worry you because somehow worrying seems to be coming up already but Uh they're just saying everything's going to be okay but reminding you to work on the big and the small Choices and decisions with them And that would be really, really great And yeah So that's actually the guidance and message that I am actually seeing And for the healing work for this card I am actually receiving from divine spirit um Divine spirit wants me to work with you With people who have chosen this card in being aware of divine spirit's presence on your journey In all areas Um somehow it's more on the energetic side than I'm seeing needing the help Because all of you are aware that um It is best and it's for your highest good to co-create with source With divine spirit, with divine source, with divine beings of light 24/7 Um whatever decisions, choices, you know, life purpose and everything in your world here And literally it's all areas of your life, right? But also energetically being aware of the presence of divine spirit And I'm seeing spirit is saying that somehow there's some um not really aware About spirit's presence and spirit that is able to guide you on all of these areas Including areas that you may neglect, you may not really neglect but um may not See or pay attention to and um Like really um spirit is is able to see all areas of your life And spirit is just saying that um being aware of the almightiness of divine spirit As the all-powerful co- co-creator of the universe, of the world of creation And not just and you know like an entity, a being And um that is what I'm receiving for divine spirit Yeah, so that is the healing work For the third card, uh for the group of you have chosen the third card So do let me know if it resonates with you for your reading, for people whom are here Okay So Judith, I'm seeing you have chosen card number two So please let me know if um the three of you or anyone who is here Would like to join in for the healing work for each card Um otherwise I would just leave it as it is and um I will be doing the session after the live
Yes, um I would say for you, Hinetiki, that uh the message and guidance just now would apply for you um Actually all of it um yeah It's just that although you you apply your intuition But um I'm seeing you would really, really work on your intuition but Spirit is saying that there are things that you may not see That can be somehow like on the sidelines That can be on your blind spot, on your sidelines, in your rearview mirror for example And you may not even notice them And uh although you try to really notice it and try to really engage in your intuition But spirit is saying uh you really would benefit so much from spirit's help And your spiritual team of light So they will inform you if there are anything that you may need to know Uh other than what perhaps other people tell you Perhaps there are things you may need to prepare Perhaps that there are some other background information that people may not notice intuitively but Um your spiritual family can see everything on your journey, on your path So that's what they are sharing with me
Yeah, that's great to hear So don't worry, they will guide you Um you can just keep communicating and connecting with your spiritual family and spirit Uh the most important thing is throughout your journey on here on earth We spend a lot of our time not really being aware that there are spiritual guides, spiritual family And your divine spirit presence, so we don't really connect and communicate a lot with them And I would say um keep connecting and communicating with them will do great And will will allow you to familiarize their energy presence Because there is so many different energies and at times there can be other Presence that may not be your spiritual family, may not be divine spirit So the best way I would say to go about this and for anyone that would like to work on Um your spiritual family's connection and communication And divine spirit is to keep connecting and communicating with them And of course, you know, know that they are divine light beings of light that's from the heavenly realms And know that these beings that you're connecting, set the intention that they are white light beings So it helps to protect you naturally um when you connect and communicate with them So I hope that helps But that's great to hear Natalie That's Yes, uh so I'm just reading um Hinetiki's comment So yes, I really want to because I know they watch and then make Things happen but I probably need to learn how to connect or know when they are around How do you connect and how like thinking or talking?
Um yes, just, just, just talking with them verbally out loud will do If you are clear audience and you know how to telepathically use Your telepathic abilities, then you can talk to them, they are able to hear hear you already I would say more often with people is um having a clear and clean connection With your spiritual family and spirit So having a safe and safe space will help you immensely when you start out to connect with them and communicate with them And the best way I did in the past is actually set time every day to make that work Um to do spirit communication specifically with
specifically with um Divine Spirit and also with my spiritual family. So I would spend five to thirty minutes and I will just set that safe and clean and clear space that spirit will hold and I will talk with them during this space. So I actually take my time to familiarize their energy, take my time to connect with them as well. So it's it's pretty, um they are pretty present and uh Divine Spirit can already hear you, no matter where you are. Yeah, because we have, we went through our life, most of us um not very much engaged in the connection with spirit and with our spiritual family. So uh more than often, we don't really engage um our abilities to communicate with them and connect with them. So that's why they are saying and suggesting um this, the message and guidance will help immensely. So I hope it helps for everyone. I will take a a look at all the cards and see if there is anything else to pick up. Any guidance or message? Yeah, not getting any other guidance or message. So I'm getting that's it from everyone's spiritual family and spirit as well. So I will be ending the session soon. Do let me know if you would like to join in the healing work. Okay, but yeah, that's good. Thanks. So too. So I'm reading your comments, especially for the next term and the next year. Yeah, um yeah, I'm seeing that I'm in a time. So I'm reading um your comments. So I can't, I can't see that, Hinetiki. And that perhaps that's why um I've received that you have already planned your path and um really outlined it pretty detailed, detailedly. I would say um it's the same with the message and guidance. It will help for you to work with your team, your spiritual family, to streamline um anything that you may not be seeing immediately, um perhaps in your blind spot. Perhaps you may not even notice as well. Some people may have um hidden intentions. Perhaps an area um is not the best to do it in a certain way. So various things um like that that they just want you to know. So that's all for this session, and thank you all for joining in. Thank you all for joining in. So I'm not sure why the face, uh Judith. So I feel kinda, okay, so I'm just looking through the comments. There's anything else? Alright, so if anyone's watching this live session after the live and you would like to still join in for the healing work, please let me know and I will add you in um for the energy work session that I will be doing after this session immediately. And um I will be posting up the keynotes for the healing work keynotes on my Facebook page, so you can check on my Facebook page if there is any other additional information while I'm doing the healing work. So thank you, everyone. So I'm reading your comments, Hinetiki. So you're saying she she is your aunt auntie? Okay. So thank you, thank you everyone for for joining in and have a great day ahead or great night ahead as well. So I'll add you in for the healing work if I'm getting that you are joining in, Hinetiki. Because I see your comment saying yes, thank you. So I'll end the session right now, and thank you all for joining in for this week's session. See you again for next week.